For the work session in Trinidad city tours more at nine ten.
Campbell here, Chris.
Here.
Uh Miller.
Here.
Richardson yes. And Michaels.
Here.
Did did you just not get a response from anybody else or?
Um who was invited was Penny Saidi from Main Street. Camilla I mean Marilyn Lenzler from Space to Create and Creative District. Um Des um I wanted to speak a little bit about the new website for the city.
Where's where's she from the city?
City Internet. Um and Wally from Economic Development. And uh. Historic District Historic Preservation District um.
Did Dan and Pinkman give you a?
I think Penny said she might make it.
That's the only one you got a response back.
Not from Wally.
I did not get a response from Wally but I think he actually told me he was trying to make it.
He's probably recovering.
It'd be nice to hear from the historic people too, I'm curious what they're doing. That's a big part of the tourism stuff, yeah this is really sick.
Yeah. Well I mean streets there.
Who's local that we could um find out if Wally's coming or?
No.
Who's local?
No go away.
Open it from here so.
My eyes are burning already.
They are my eyes, my headache is coming. That's amazing.
Yeah we have quite a few people from Las Vegas.
Cause they're evacuated this far up.
Well they wanted a place where they thought it was far enough away so they could enjoy life.
Instead of just freaking out.
Why am I, are we in a meeting?
Yeah we are in a meeting. Well let's I well if we wanna talk about the show first of all I guess I I saw um I saw Jerry yesterday and he said that we didn't we were giving him half this year what we gave him last year at the Blues Fest and I thought it was the same amount.
Same amount we had said.
Twenty eight thousand dollars twenty twelve dollar twenty four hundred a month for twelve months.
But in your letter you said twelve.
I didn't see the letter.
I didn't see the letter either.
It was just the one that told me.
Um.
Just check it Marty.
Just check that that's it and what else?
And then um you know we we have all this stuff we're talking about with the Tourism Center and the State Tourism Center and our Tourism Center and the process of all that I realized that it's something that came up last year and I think maybe you even mentioned it Chris is that we don't have enough signage for our current welcome center. And so I was thinking just to help you know I don't know what's gonna happen in the future but just to help our tourism some of this thing we've we've many times avoided the I twenty five corridor we're always so focused on that sixty seven which doesn't have good signs and on the I twenty five corridor in New Mexico the signs are very cheap and I mean like two hundred and fifty dollars a month. If you know they have some big white signs like every fifty miles that are just blank right now. What if we what if we could um do like a Trinidad program for the summer and see how it is like Trinidad you know state welcome center or tourism or whatever we wanna put on that sign like one every fifty miles cause they're out there and if you drive from Albuquerque right now you see them empty and so we always thought the thing for our book is highway sixty seven but it really isn't good signage out there there's small signs they're not lit they're all they're not maintained well is it how would the board feel about entertaining to do some signage on the I twenty five corridor to ruffle people downtown since signage is a problem in general anymore right now right just to get signage that people notice because people notice this more so but the I twenty five corridor has huge signs that aren't being ran.
Could they invest in some some like Google ads for their car or welcome center all their phones that pop up as they drive.
I've been to anything but.
I'm more open I think to something like that to maybe the pop up thing.
Geo target getting on your.
And to target our welcome center.
You mentioned that last year when we were we were all this debate has gone on in town if the welcome center is gonna be here or it's in the world and all the stuff people are talking about and then we get full Trinidad and then all of a sudden I realized that you know we're not doing right for our welcome center right now and then I was thinking you know you mentioned that last year Chris we need more signage but where can you get that signage without it looking junky? So maybe if we did that on the I twenty five corridor that Trinidad that might be a big way to go.
Was there also one of those just like stamp signs that says car or welcome center?
They are but but notoriously if you look at those state signs right now the C dot signs.
They're all bent over.
Or they're coming off and there's only one thing left because people realize that when you're looking for a place to eat you no longer drive on the highway to look at these signs that say you know.
I think I could really push something on the phone for the welcome center.
And I don't know how to do that.
It's just a Google ad and you can do it based on geography and you do it within an X number of radian mile radius.
And then pay for that to be in that.
And you pay for and it's not expensive and it's a pay per clicks so you set a budget per day.
Yeah.
And if it's.
But maybe we could do that because that would help our welcome center and just advertise a welcome center. Let's not go anything else right now let's just target it.
Si are you saying that there's nothing on the like highway here from Marlboro this way?
Well I think you know there's about day traffic on eighty seven.
There is a lot yeah there is. It's just signage.
Well there are there are some I even need to go back to Dumas or or Dalhart you know back that way as people are coming. Yeah.
Along the 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 uh volcanic field where you get I was claiming it is pretty sparse but there's.
Yeah well and and I'm open to I mean what this we all are open to whatever it it would take but I just you know I just realized that we really don't have good signage and then I remember we talking about the signage last year and really even if you come in on by Sonic here what it what what does really church but they're only blocking half what's what really do we have to get them back there.
How can we get a sign there?
There's a but there's some signs there but they're not very nice and it's there's there's it's a little junky here.
Yeah they're slow they're yeah they're like it's it's kinda junk up. Yeah.
I I mean just one good solid sign that just says the things that like this way is historic Main Street this is the Colorado Welcome Center you know.
One good sign. And since we're in you know many social now how can we do that?
Yeah.
Well even in Rant Home if we probably go board there.
But that's too far away people forget.
But can we can we not put a sign this if you get.
That's why I want.
If you're not on a.
If they look at a billboard.
Oh sorry he's trying to tell us.
Um I had a conversation yesterday with Talise with Talitha and she's been communicating with the Main Street Board and apparently wayfinding signage is it it is on the it is on the way so I'm not sure. I I asked Penny to be here today to kind of bring us up to speed on the wayfinding signage signage but I I know what had been proposed was what you have in mind as directional signage like the welcome center this way and this in this way and the you know whatever that's more defined as directional way.
Those brown kinds that already exist right aren't there are those the ones?
There are some that we have.
That are blank or ready to be printed or something or what do we do?
I I don't know exactly what there is in the inventory I really don't.
And I don't wanna be totally negative but we heard that last year and we never got any.
And there are there are banners being produced so.
I just think we just need to focus on our welcome center we are the welcome center and I think we need to just even that billboard just try to get people into that welcome center uh highlight the gift shop do some different things like that you know I I think I I don't mind highlighting the gift shop you know I'm a gift shop downtown cause if they come downtown they're gonna go to all of us.
I was in there uh Saturday the welcome center to pick up some uh got the key cards and some guides um the Best Western wanted some uh not the Best Western anymore.
Yeah Days Inn.
Days Inn wanted some uh travel guides to put in their rooms cause they have a lot of people requesting what's going on around here. So I stopped up there and I picked I stopped at the welcome center and picked up two boxes and uh this travel lodge here on Main Street wanted more key cards they got rid of a whole box of key cards already and they wanted another one. But there was a couple in there and they said that that was one of the best well stock uh welcome centers in the that they had been in.
Oh nice.
And they had sat there and they were watching the film that you have there and they were just they just couldn't go on enough about how how nice it's set up.
Oh good. Oh fuck it. I'm happy.
Yeah yeah so but I think if if we're gonna do something I think we should maybe do something off of eighty seven off of Y twenty five in Rent Home. That's the two things that we should look at is is those two things cause there is a lot of day traffic coming out of eighty seven you know now that it's two lanes.
Marty I have a question about the welcome center too. Is there any educational thing about like fire safe and things like that that's that are going on? Cause when I was in there before it was a while ago so I don't remember seeing something for something specific.
The Colorado Tourism Office just like uh dispenses those to our welcome center.
Okay.
We have all fire safety campaign um you know be aware of fires you know be there's in.
Is there leave no trace campaign stuff in that too?
Well there was some really good stuff. So in every one of these um official state visitor guides we insert a leave no trace brochure.
Uh huh. Okay. Well I think I saw that from the Department of Tourism that when they first put that out okay.
Right. We've also started putting them in our own local visitor guides so if they don't pick up this one they've got this one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah and you know it.
I'm afraid this year so.
Oh I know we've got it all over the place Chris you wanna have those?
Yeah.
Are there enough of those to put those in some of the shops in town and stuff like that like at the Central Market would be or the marketplace would be a good place and.
Yeah well you know I did and I wanna say we had some Hollywood people in town scoping up for another reason this past week and uh they saw our our guide and they were like this is one of the best hotels that we have seen. So that was.
Well we're doing something good alright yeah.
Jeff an out time.
So okay so I wanna drop the conversation what can we do to make this year better?
I think on eighty seven like twenty five.
And I think they need to do Google.
And what can we do in town here what can we do with Google?
I don't wanna drop.
We actually have I have a Google business uh listing uh so it it's a free business just in terms of state and it is the welcome center.
Can we do it yeah can we really push something like that on.
So. So. You can do ads or boost your stuff on that but yeah that increases the traffic on your on your.
Yeah.
We don't have like a hundred WC.
Yeah.
I think we ought to do that.
I I I mean budget of a thousand dollars a month for Google ads or something like that.
And that's a lot.
You don't even really have to go that high.
You don't have to go that high.
You can do a hundred dollars a month and get a lot of hits.
And I've always thought about making it more real and like the sense of like having uh Marty and Jeff and a couple of volunteers like making their own bit hoji like come see them wouldn't that be cool? Cause it makes it feel more friendly.
We like. We could put anything on there and you know like the wildfires you know come visit us you know do the leave no trace thing uh the the Trinidad the Colorado Tourism Office sends out videos on a regular basis all we have to do is post those and boost them and.
Can we boost I think we have a page that boosts the welcome center it's a priority.
If they already have existing content then we should use their existing content.
Yes yeah.
And that makes it easier.
And I have very loose tag called Trinidad Welcome Center.
Can I show my welcome center?
Yeah.
Then it sends them to your Google business page and your Facebook page.
Yeah I I I feel like you are a very good.
They'll get them.
Most people use those forms constantly I mean it's like their bible.
Then can we put that on to do that the other thing the other thing they consider is Spotify ads cause people who are listening to the radio those who could also geo target.
Yeah they're pretty wonderful. And I did wanna do a call up to the Comedy and Bike Festival this weekend I had a friend of mine who lives in Denver that called me that night and said Si what's going on in Trinidad and I said what are you talking about they go comedy bike thing that I don't know how that happened but it was being broadcast in Denver like every fifteen twenty minutes on some station and they called and they said we gotta turn on that goes on we'll come down but it was that was a great thing just to hear Trinidad's name was being broadcast in Denver that much I don't know how that happened.
That would be a whole.
So do I.
Okay let's go back to the Google.
Can I do you want me to add Google and Spotify ads to the next agenda and bring with us costs?
And and the. And the billboards coming out of the south taking us across eighty seven and like twenty five.
Yeah.
And if and if there was something reasonable from Albuquerque would you be prepared not to do that or be just because I I like I just did that truck the truck back from Albuquerque and I was like wow there's all these empty boards here and they're in the middle of nowhere so even what that just said trip bad on it I don't know it just seemed like you know.
Trinidad casino though.
No luck.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Friends.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean it's kind of.
Okay. We're gonna wait a little bit until Jared's presentation is available but so what I brought with me today basically is some of the advertising that we've been doing um but did you have a direction that you wanted to go any ideas that you developed in the meantime as far as a cohesive marketing plan are you still gonna get hold of Kathy Ritter? I just wanted to know what the plans is.
Wasn't that what this meeting was a little bit about was to find out from these different groups of what they are working on so that we have
It is.
the information to then maybe go to somebody like Kathy Ritter and talk to her about a more comprehensive plan? Yep I I mean I thought that was the direction we were in.
Penny just texted me just.
I I thought that if we brought everybody together that we would have more minds working on what we wanna do and then we put somebody like Kathy Ritter as to what we do have to offer and then maybe she could put something together with for us this was my idea of thinking but we just have to go another game plan with with uh.
Well may maybe we call her and just see what she does and maybe she can bring stakeholders together as part of what she's doing.
You know here's my here's my personal feeling is you've asked these people to be here they not responded the people that do respond you guys made that decision and they're gonna complain afterwards
Yeah.
but they were given the opportunity to be here so afterwards it I mean you know it's done.
We yeah yeah that's kind of it is we need them it's two players and we want we want sounds right there you know so.
So I think that. Right.
So Penny just did text me cause I text her and asked her where she was at and she said she's been really 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 sick so.
Um Victor's on the Main Street Board right?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have can I borrow him do you think for?
Yeah I'll ask him. Well that's a great idea.
And Chris is from Historic Preservation she comes to you wanna speak with her.
Okay. Yeah let's do it.
Alright let me see what.
For his meeting that's awesome.
See that's the biggest problem that we have is that you know people are invited they don't show up
We do.
that there's all this misinformation propaganda that goes out.
Mm-hmm.
I agree. And Amy it's Marty um it's an in person meeting I don't have a Zoom setup. No. Can you can you scurry on down here? Oh okay. Oh no okay alright understandable I will. No okay alright hon thank you okay bye. Amy's watching her goddaughter her grandfather had a heart attack and they had him fly in flight for life that was Amy from the chamber.
Hey she's a little busy.
Hello.
Um well it maybe we could so besides the city personnel that may be coming up is there any?
Okay there's Victor.
Victor.
Hi did you have any questions for me?
I just wanted to get all the questions.
I'm sweating just start talking.
I'm sweating I was like oh how they are.
Victor just confess just tell us.
Just go Victor what am I talking about?
Just let you know what's going on in Main Street.
What's they just doing? Oh okay so we got can we show you the banners yet?
No.
No.
Let me go grab it real quick.
We're in the dark.
We're in the dark this is why we had a meeting.
I do wanna do a shout out to Victor that all the play cards downtown that have historical signatures on on the on the buildings
I don't think there's.
years ago when I was on Main Street it was one of my pet peeves that Victor took it on his pocket and all those brand new signs that you can read that in front you know if you're in front of first those are all due to Victor he found what the old word he was you know that as a sign.
That must be better.
So to.
Is there a meeting tonight?
Yes.
Okay so we'll be able to solve things.
Five thirty.
Alright.
I hope so.
So we have about nineteen different styles of these that are gonna go through town so we have like one of Sister Blandina Art Arcade we have Fishers Peak this skate park um so this is kind of what we look like.
That's that's great and so did did you guys need to get new banner holders for those and everything or?
No they already have them.
We had ordered already the brackets um and I think Topar is making them so.
Sorry. Uh huh. Okay. Cause they how it looks like different sizes. Yeah that's fantastic.
Yeah so we have the brackets and this is just one of them we wanted to test one out and see what the fabric or
Uh huh. Uh huh.
What they were gonna look like and see they're gonna stab it to the wings.
Their service. Their horrible. No. Thank you.
Good luck.
Can you leave the protection on so they don't fake?
I think they do but they're actually not that expensive so we're able we ordered these I think we ordered about ten um so we have different nineteen different styles and they came out so nice they were they're actually artists rendering from different companies or uh different artists.
Uh huh.
One of those that you had in Trinidad the artists?
No we weren't able to get anybody local that was um that they want.
No.
So once projected time for them to go out.
So we wanna get them ordered this week and we wanna get them um at least up by middle of or beginning of June.
Wonderful.
Uh so we have like the I think that we have one of the triggers and just like different yeah Fishers Peak.
How wonderful. Wonderful so will they go on Main Street and commercial yeah wonderful thanks for that.
Yeah. You're welcome and then uh we're going to Virginia this weekend Penny and I.
Uh huh.
So we're going to.
To the nationals?
Yeah.
Oh how wonderful congratulations.
So we're excited so we're going Sunday and uh doing different stuff you know we're putting leaflets into the utilities um to let them know about the some of you may have known about them already trigger games the schedule the Fourth of July schedule um they're gonna be doing some different advertising and stuff as well.
Maybe this is one thing you could take back to the board.
I hope they want to speak to us.
Sure.
We wanna try and get as many people in Trinidad on different boards to help those people in Trinidad in different ways.
Okay.
And maybe your board can come up with some things that we can get together put that all together and devise a plan that we're all on the same page to advertising the different sites different things to do in Trinidad the events that are going on and things like that.
Yeah yeah.
So uh.
Yeah I think what they wanna do is you know keep the the social media campaign going and making sure that these can do for.
Sir what's the main focus of the Main Street um maybe like what what are you what are your sort of like your charge?
So their basic is their basic goal is to support the different businesses in the community and to let people know about the different event that's going around on in town um so I think the one of the biggest one is the Fourth of July you know they have all these events going on that day um and then during around the Christmas time the interpriment for businesses in town doing getting people to participate in the trolley uh rides um boating different businesses and and things like that so.
And I think you guys were responsible for some of the bike racks downtown?
Yes.
And the pianos?
And the benches.
And the benches.
So what are your what are like so in the next six months what are you guys doing?
Um this so their their campaign for the next probably next six months would be to and and you know the Fourth of July is a big event so that takes up a lot of time um so then right after the Fourth of July that they'll focus on the it's usually the Christmas and the Fourth of July.
I think I think the Fourth of July is probably what I would call the Main Street signature event that they do every year they really do a great job of that it's very.
Yeah it's the winter's got me that vibe.
Does does Main Street do the parade Christmas parade?
No that's hometown holidays.
Yes.
I think you say that you said an excellent Santa Claus I just just saying.
I I.
Was it you?
I actually think they should do a white beard contest in Trinidad like there's more white beard in this town than I've ever seen anywhere.
Oh that's a great idea. Maybe we could do that somehow.
Yeah. Yeah do you remember we had the mayor the mayor cardboard of?
Oh yeah.
So what we did was for Christmas so to encourage people to shop local that's basically the real goal of the Main Street is to shop local so they had to print out made a cardboard of the mayor and so you.
Yeah. Yeah. Mayor we need to do that again.
So you.
You know what would be fun helping is to take a caricature of the mayor.
Uh huh. See oh yeah.
Yeah draw have someone draw a caricature.
Yeah yeah and in all the windows.
Okay. Well it does make it makes it more.
In all the windows in all the windows downtown yeah.
Yeah all the windows have one.
Yeah.
Victor is there any wayfinding signage being discussed?
Um not I mean there was discussion I know that they had wanted to apply for some grants for that but I think that kind of fell on wrong somebody some of the shirt.
Oh and so what is the difference but there's supposed to be somebody hired that would sort of be the secretary to to entities in Main Street
and another one to hold that national credential? I think that they're uh gonna be putting the at all next week that Donna and Donna and Mike are working on that.
Oh. And then and and you you may know but just to repeat it because I know that the Main Street group struggles here to get words out at times is it's it is not a local Main Street is a national part of the National Main Street group that that one we brought to the Main Street group here and that's why you're going to Virginia wherever you're going yeah.
Right yeah good.
I'm gonna mention that in answer to a couple of things here suggestion is that you know I know Mike is working on trying to put out an advertisement for a Main Street uh director that's gonna be real critical then it'll do a couple of different things. The other thing that and not only the Main Street Board but I really wish that all the different boards uh would come up with their own specific mission statement and also a strategic plan at the beginning of the year that way in this particular case like you asked this is that what's the purpose of of you know of the Main Street so the mission statement would I should identify what they're actually doing how everybody can identify to that mission statement and also a strategic plan for the year I mean you can change but if your specifics that's the way you're gonna be working on for the year so I wish that all boards would do that.
And and Main Street's gonna be working with um a firm to get exactly that mission statement and uh
One of our missions is to get people off I twenty five and shop downtown that's and that's why
That's our passion.
and that's why we ask your board to come together with us to kind of figure to start working on getting these people off the highway more of these people we we already have a lot of people coming off the highway uh try to get more.
There's sure there's a collaboration between.
And it it's so important for for our our downtown area I mean really go to any restaurant and there's the same hundred of us that go lots of the restaurants downtown and you'll see at any restaurant at any night fifty percent of people in the restaurant are not from Trinidad and so that's how important it is to have people come downtown because we have all these hardworking people now in new new areas and Olmax and you know go on and on about the people that are trying but they can't succeed unless we make sure that they have a flow through of traffic coming through so you know it's really tough.
So do you have a brand that you're moving forward with as far as your advertising or your marketing or anything like that is there a brand that you?
Not specifically no.
Okay.
No.
I shouldn't Main Street be the whatever branding that tourism uses Main Street should also use?
Well it's true so again it it a really weird way is they fall under the national rules so they're they're a little different than us just
National.
being uh hey you wanna do what we're doing I'm sure there's a lot of things they can do but they have to fall under those national cause we're at some criteria now I forget what that is like you you start out here you get up here
Yeah. Certain chair yeah.
and if you don't get up to here then at that point you need a director and if you don't they take you down a few notches and it makes a difference in your community when you're applying for grants when you have this accreditation that means that people in town have tried really hard to make it work so then you're better off inserting grants.
Yeah and the difference could be like up to twenty five thousand dollars in you know each tier so it's it's a lot of money that you know they they give us.
Victor can you can you open that again is there a QR code for whether it be the city whether it be for the city or the tourism board?
Um no but we could.
That's a great idea.
Might pull that on there.
The website is on. Is it too high?
Visit Trinidad all about about.
The web the website.
It's our tourism website.
But we are also having like postcards um and.
We love it we love hotels.
Leaflets that are um gonna be putting out but maybe we could put QR codes on that stuff but I think maybe it would be too hard to do QR codes on these. Yeah they are gonna be pretty nice.
I think with the postcards it's a great idea.
Yeah. We had to have some great I will check if they have the pictures to show you right now uh we're gonna check that those order finished up today and uh there's some great pictures of the.
Thanks thanks Victor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello um my name's Chris Hall I work in the planning department uh as the planning uh associate so uh just wanted to introduce myself and let you know what uh I do uh take care of the the planning zoning and variance commission which is meets the second Tuesday of every month and I also have a take care of a uh the Historic Preservation Commission which meets the second Wednesday of every month and I'm really excited about that because we're planning an outreach uh meeting which will be on June the third and uh it's Echoes of History. Start at the side. And we would like to connect with uh the different groups in our community and see if we can do something in coordination with them as far as Historic Preservation goes. Um currently we're working on landmarking Fort Wooton if you're familiar with it early and we wanna support Fort Wooton and help them. And we wanna support Fort Wooton and help them get their funding for restrooms and ADA compliance and and um support the other buildings in the area, so um.
Do you guys have a?
Any questions?
And I don't know if this was for you or somebody else, is there like a little and Mary, you might know this better, is there a map of like the historic buildings in town? So people wanna do a little walking tour or whatever?
Oh, yeah, also there there is a historic walking tour that.
We have. Yeah, our parking walk. Is available, I mean, an architectural walking tour that you have Christie Rogers and I put together.
Christie.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the one we saw on Facebook, but that's just the commercial areas downtown, right?
Right. That's the historic district.
Oh, the historic district.
Yeah, the whole historic district.
But is there one that's quints to like the different houses around town that people can go through that's less?
There's a general map of the uh Porzon Day, is it Trinidad?
Trinidad.
Which has the different landmarks on it and but that district is expanding to the other side of the highway now.
Well, my house, for example, is landmark preservation, historic landmark preservation house, and we get people, like mostly people who live here though, who like who've known this house for years and will take pictures of it and things, but you know, I mean, my house isn't really my house, it's the city's house, right?
Right.
And people should be able to like go and take a photo of it if anyone.
Yeah, or walk by and or know about it.
Yeah.
Or maybe we could have someday we could have a historic tour of homes for Christmas or something, is there somebody who runs those or who would do it?
The Chamber of Commerce did that.
Yeah, they did it successfully for a few years, it was it was it was pretty nice, I know.
They utilized the trolley, so they would get on the trolley and they'd take them to the different homes.
A suggestion, you know, we have kiosks in town, we should set up a kiosk, it's out these entryways, I think a something maybe like that. Now we should all of these buildings and when people come in, they can say, well, I wanna go see this building or that building.
I was at a I was at a restaurant.
Or I just took that tour and it's it's wonderful.
I think that would be good.
Because it stayed up.
Yeah, you can take different.
It was good.
I was at a restaurant Saturday and they had that kiosk and it was.
Except for some buildings at a time, so we did them all individually, we recorded each one individually.
It it had everything that was in that restaurant, I mean, that was available, they had uh boy, the entertainments were gonna be on, the food menu, they but it's this it really is what Trinidad needs, a couple of them like.
I mean, I did pinpointing all the historic buildings in town, I think that would be good for a kiosk.
Yeah, I I agree with you.
Well, on that note, I would like to suggest something that is not something we put flyers in or maps in, it needs to be digital.
Yeah.
So that it can be updated regularly, it can be maintained, it doesn't get skanky looking with flyers and stuff on it.
Yeah, I think the kiosks with like the one that you guys did that historic one with the QR code, so then you can get it on your phone and you can follow it and then another one.
Needs to be digital.
And then if there's any actual tours that are live guided by the control, you can put those and then you can add the dates and times, right, on one of those?
It changes every year. Here's one.
Yeah, well, they are to the different events.
Architectural tour is actually a mobile app.
Uh huh.
Do I know it, I on your phone.
And I think that's the mobile app.
Here's here's party, here's one of them that they had in that restaurant is it was they they're they're a brewery. So they have all the different beers they had, and then the next thing that would come on would be all the events that they're having on in that place, and it's and it's right on the River Walk.
Right.
And it's uh if Trinidad have these in key places around Trinidad, even at the Welcome Center.
Gotta make sure.
Because at the Welcome Center, you figure you're having that thing just keep on playing all over and over.
They have some that you can put on your sidewalk, so they're solar operated, so they they don't require electricity, they're all solar batteries.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Um I have got some in my files, I can send you for review at the next event.
Yeah. We'd be I'd be really interested in them.
Well, Chris, have you lived in the area?
Yes, I recently moved here from Dallas.
Uh huh.
Sixth generation Texan.
So how did you find Trinidad, I always love your people story.
Okay, well, um some of my family lives in Blanca and um we have a cabin in Blanca and I was planning on moving there, but um fate brought me here to the city and I now live in almost uh almost home in Weston, uh huh, I call it. So uh my personal plan is to to help uh the housing crisis in this area, in the food crisis.
And and how how do you plan to do that?
Um personally, working with planning and zoning to get get some more access to affordable housing. Uh and then the other plan I have is to make a food court in the area. So you know, if people see something from the highway that looks like food, they'll stop and then take, you know, note of of how beautiful Trinidad is.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, did you see the food court that just opened at the marketplace?
Yeah, I go there often.
Yeah. Yeah, so is it?
This will be tral- outdoors.
Outdoors, okay, that's what I was trying to get is what the difference would be, that's very cool.
Okay.
Yeah, for food food trucks and whatnot, I I hear over and over and over this need of uh having a place for food trucks to be. Um from uh working at the desk and planning and just, you know, seeing the different, I think we have a food desert on this side of town, but we have plenty of food choices down Main Street, so you know, if we could get traffic to stop, you know, just see if any kind of food at, you know, access to food, I think that would make them wanna go and explore Trinidad, especially when we open.
Right. I think that's the biggest thing that's bringing the the Trinidad proper is is food.
Yes.
And uh and and I think and I think that's that's what we need is is that.
Yeah, it is, that's why we need traffic.
Yeah.
Chris, does the Historic Preservation Committee do any kind of advertising?
Um they're just promoting the outreach events that they have, other than that, I don't think we're doing anything currently, because we're just new, we're, I mean, I think we've been doing for about two years now.
Probably been that, yeah, there, yeah, it's been in existence, I think, longer than that, but they just kinda cut it together.
So the Tourism Board is looking at, they're they're actually trying to reach a comprehensive cohesive program as far as advertising. So a theme or, you know, making sure that we're covering the areas of the city that we need to, as far as letting people know what's going on and what's here. Uh so that being said, do you have something that, some ideas for the Tourism Board that that we could do for the Historic Preservation Committee as well?
Well, just promoting historic preservation, because that's what Trinidad is known for is is their historic buildings, you know, when I go to Denver, they they're always like, oh, we all, you know, when I went to the Historic Preservation uh meeting in Denver, they're just uh in awe of Trinidad, because we've come so far with historic preservation, you know. Uh other cities haven't even began to have a CLG where where we're already established, so.
This is one of the things that why we asked the boards to come meet with us today was to and and here here's the thing right here, you have, you know, this is what we want. We want to advertise this, we have advertising dollars, we wanna bring the people to Trinidad to see these things and
Awesome.
We and we need all the input we can get to make a plan for Trinidad, all these entities who are together to advertise Trinidad, to bring people in in the downtown area.
And we'll have uh new ideas for this event and um I hopefully we'll have a banner uh designed tonight and I'd like to share that with y'all for advert advertising.
Great.
I think they it's right on Main Street, this event.
When I received that flyer, I don't remember the lady's name, but she would bring Elizabeth. Was it Elizabeth or Jana? Or Elizabeth. Was it Jana?
It was probably Elizabeth.
She made an invitation to the Tourism Board if anybody wanted to present at this event or be present at that event to talk about
yeah, historic preservation.
Historic preservation, so if anybody's interested in that board, when is it, where is it?
It's on June third, on Friday from three to five at Trinidad Trinidad His History Museum. I um have a, you know, I kind of like a liaison, but Elizabeth Kelly is running the event, even though it has my name on it, she's in charge of it. And we wanna promote outreach, like we wanna have one of our members attend each meeting. And we're hoping that we can get a city council liaison uh for our board, so for our commission. And hopefully that'll happen soon and we'll um have like a yearly annual event that everyone can look forward to, like you have with uh the the other councils or commissions.
Does this does this come like out of your private uh budget for your department, or how are you funding to have make this work?
We're hoping to get uh funding from, we don't want to money, I have a request before.
Is there money through the History Colorado for your group too, or is that more?
We um we also get grants through History Colorado for to attend different meetings and learn outreach, you know, learn about historic preservation. So, yeah, and then our uh mission is to teach uh the community about historic preservation and how they can become landmarked and and have access to grants. You know, so they can make adjustments to their homes to make them livable.
Do you guys offer classes on how to get the grant money for historic preservation, because in a rural community, it's like thirty five cents on the dollar, they're really good grants. And your house only has to be fifty years old or older, which is pretty much every house in Trinidad, you know, yeah, and and I mean, they're really, really good grants, but they take some, they take some legwork in, so
Right. Yeah.
Well, if you if you obtain a grant through the historic um state fund,
Yeah.
usually there's other grants that you can use to piggy piggyback on that grant, like if they find that you're um that you have a are you, what am I trying to say? Where you can, you if you obtain one grant, then they'll they'll follow and match those funds.
But I think through like the history um preservation group, if they offered little workshops to homeowners about how to get those grants and what to do.
We'll have we'll have some of that information at this meeting, because I mean, there is it's it's they're great programs.
Just remember, we give grants for advertising. And so if you plan on doing some advertising, we we can help you in that.
One of the one of the things that I'm gonna mention, the biggest problem that that we, worthy we get it at this end, I guess you could say, throughout everything that we do. Is that all this money at the state level, they say, okay, we're gonna have to provide all these meetings, and all they do is regurgitate year after year, day after day, all just we're having a meeting, we're having a meeting. But they do not put any money into like the historical preservation, tourism or operations. That's the one thing that I have been hounding our state legislators for at the state level, they need to start identifying money for operations specifically. Because that's where the work gets done, and that's exactly what you're looking for, that's what you're needing, that's what you're needing, that's what all these other organizations need.
I'll reach out to them on a regular basis, I said, I sent them updates about what we're doing and hopefully they'll highlight some of uh the homes in our area or I'm hoping they do that with Fort Wooton and.
I think that's a a place that really needs to be preserved.
Yes.
Because of all of the military emblems on the inside of the courtyard, I was, they're just awesome, we've been there for years.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think I think that's.
I just sent all of all the information on on grants, just today, I hope we can get them some money, some money.
I agree with you.
They did a great job with the music, I went a few times last summer when they had music in the courtyard, I thought they really did a great job with that.
Yeah, I attended their uh last event two Saturdays ago and it was just packed.
Packed.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm happy to meet all of you.
Yes, nice to meet you, thank you. Jared, are you ready?
So the tooth has shown up in the last one.
Well, I know, it was really nice to have to have him here, but I just wish whoever was supposed to be here could have passed on the message to get someone else here. You know, it yeah, but anyway, we got it done, Aaron?
Okay.
You got two of them.
I didn't even have anything prepared, to be honest with you.
I'm good.
Oh, I'm Des, I work in the City Clerk's office, I do business licenses, I get out council agenda packets, you name it. And most recently, I was chosen to be the point or the lead for the new website, we just contracted with a company called Revised for the city's website. It's gonna take about twenty one weeks for it to get going, um my hope is to bring more of the touristy side into the city's website, maybe combine the visit Trinidad or a link to the visit Trinidad and make our calendars one sync, because right now there's nothing on our events. And I don't get any updates what's on going on in Trinidad. If you Google Trinidad, Colorado, the first website that comes up is the city's website, visit Trinidad comes afterward. People are going to our website and they're like, there is nothing in Trinidad.
Right.
So it'd be helpful if I got a list of events or anything, so that we can start making our current website, even though it's going away in about six months
Uh huh.
better, that way when our new website comes in, everything.
Whatever's going over. This is such an excellent point, because I accidentally strolled onto the same thing but didn't react, and you did and brought it to our attention, so thank you for that.
So I was doing the calendar for the city's website, and that was when I first started this job. And then my hats started increasing and I just I couldn't keep up with our website and the city website and it just it fell, I completely dropped the ball on that and that, so that really falls on me, but when we do the new website, I think what we should do is rather than trying to populate calendars on both websites or multiple websites, we could link them, so that's the idea.
That's what I would like to do. Yeah, that's what we'd like to do, because like I said, if you Google it and city comes up first, you're gonna wanna see what's going on in Trinidad. Hey, I'm driving through Trinidad, maybe there's something, what is this town? So I wanna make it more community friendly as well as make it more um let everyone know that we're a welcoming community and anybody who comes in, you know.
With the new website, will the various like agencies be able to update it more easily, so for example, like the Community Center, they haven't updated their website since twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
And as a new community member, like trying to find out anything about youth sports or calendars or what activities they have, you have to call them and it's a pain.
Yeah, I agree, so right now with the website, there's only two of us doing content management. So if no one tells us, we don't know, and we have other jobs to do, so.
But do will they be able to update their own content with the new one or something or something?
Too many hats, we have to be ADA accessible, we have to follow the WCAG guidelines. There's only a few of us, Marty included, who are trained to do the accessibility, and I think it would take too much time, so when I do this, my plan is to keep on them, so that they.
Well, how do they get, what's your email, how do they get ahold of, how do they get ahold of you?
So desery.sanival@trinidad.co.goe.
Is there is there someplace where they could populate something that then you could take and make it live? That makes it just really easy for the people who are in those agencies to add, like, you know, youth sports calendar, it would be great, plus a link to the forums.
Yeah.
And even a better thing, so you could submit the forums electronically and hey, you know, we are the twenty 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 two.
That's a good idea.
No, I I agree, a lot of our um so the online payments that we have right now are through Tyler Technologies, and the only department that can take online payments right now would be utility billing. I wanted to do that for business licenses, because a lot of people go on there, they wanna renew, it's just not, it's not easy.
With the new system?
With the new system even so, because we just use Tyler Technologies, and it would be more involved than than needs to be, but it is something that I wanna look at. Uh we all have to be on the same it's hard to explain, so when I have business licenses, um which I go through Tyler Technology, but it's a completely different version. So if somebody opened a new business and they wanted to apply, well, I have an online form, they apply. To pay, they would have to have their business already in the system before they could pay. And I I would have to put their business in first before they could pay, but if they're just doing an online form, it won't sync between the program that I use for them to do that, if that makes sense.
Hey, Des, one of the things I was gonna do, I'll talk to Mike about this, and what I see as a problem that can be resolved is that all the boards and commissions need to come together in a meeting. And they'll commit the request of the city manager, so that you can be there and you can explain to them what this new website will do, what what they can and can't do. And what's expected of each one to be able to give their input so that it can go into the new website, because right now I think what's happening is they don't understand it. Majority probably maybe don't understand, including myself, and so that we can expand this into where it's supposed to be. This way everybody hears it, this way everybody hears it at the same time. And so that we can expand this into where it's supposed to be. This way everybody hears it, this way everybody hears it at the same time.
We all need to communicate it.
And what are other towns doing for their payment? Cause I mean, other towns have things on it. Can we just use something that is already existing and?
They might have a different company altogether that's doing their payments. But if you were to talk to Cheryl Mavaret downstairs in finance, I brought this to her attention, she would tell you that it's just not ready for that. And I I don't understand the finance part of it. Because somebody has to get at the back end of it to take that payment and process it and then balance, um do the balance and checks for that department. That would be a Cheryl thing too. But I I hear what you're saying. I want to move completely into the twenty-first, twenty-second century, whatever, you know, so that we can make it better. Cause I for one like.
Well, like you can even get your license and pay for it. You can drive a license and pay for it now online.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, so it's just, the whole thing's a movement.
I agree. Even so, I do municipal port as well. And so people are always wanting to pay their tickets online and it's I don't know if it's the company that we're using for the Tyler part that doesn't connect. I really don't know that part. But I I would love to do that too for municipal port, just to get people to pay their tickets. Because they don't wanna call me and pay their ticket. They just wanna go online, get it done, forget it or happen.
Right.
But yeah, no, I I'm totally for everything that you're saying.
In New Mexico, one of the biggest struggles was was it was illegal for the municipality to transfer the transaction fees to um the customer. So the city will by then had to assume those transaction fees. And so there was no interest on the city's part to go to that process, because they were losing money. People are gonna have to pay their bill, people are gonna have to do these things regardless. So there was no incentive on the city's portion to to do that, to assume that convenience. And so for a long time, in fact, Raton still wanna think the PD that can take credit cards and do that stuff. Um so I'm not sure what it is here in necessarily Colorado, but.
We have, we have another company that takes credit card fees. So we have Tyler Technologies that takes the standard fee. And we have Open Edge that does the two and a half percent for all credit card fees. And so all those credit card fees goes to Open Edge and it's processed that way. And then they pay annually to Tyler Tech. So really, those are probably the basics that I know about it.
Yeah, it's common.
But when you pay like for the city, I have a business in Denver and another place. So I go to their, their city websites have places that then you go and you pay through a system. So in the state of Colorado, they have a system for that that's legal. And so in one city I do, I pay all my sales tax online and I do it through, it's an E-Biz, it's a third-party site that takes the payment for business licenses too. And then in the other one, Denver's is set up more like the state. If you've ever paid state um sales tax, you go in the state system, but they have almost the same system. Um it's just slightly different. So I know those exist in the state of Colorado.
Yes, yes, they do. And I think um it's a matter of probably budgeting. I mean, I'm sure that has something to do with it.
Well, you know, Dez, the other thing, it takes the liability off of you and the city, because if you're have, somebody calls in and says, I wanna give you my credit card number over the phone. Could be a liability.
Yeah.
So if it's a secure site to think with and and put in their their credit card number.
Also, the vacuum of bookkeeping is a lot of labor hours for the city. That's gets really expensive. And if it can go automatically, that saves tons of money and prevents error.
So I I can talk to Cheryl and I would like that too, I really would. But um.
So can I think of a calendar disc? Is there something?
With the new revised website, is there something that we can collaborate?
Something that'll um link the two. And then if you manage something in Visit Trinidad, it'll populate into the city of Trinidad. I just want one calendar, one calendar for agendas or the commission means. I don't have any tourism or meetings listed on the city's website. Um or the commission page, but nothing. I mean, I don't even think your names are updated. I'll have to look into that.
I think I did update you.
Yeah. So.
Um I have a question about Revised. So Revised is a company that does web design. And so is any of our other entities or
Web design.
boards or commissions that we know also use Revised? Like, would it be a benefit if we all used Revised? I don't know. I'm just trying to think of.
Realistically, they should all be under one.
It should be. So I think that would be, yeah.
And that's why I, and I think that's.
And that's where the connection of all the boards would probably come in, is by everybody's being.
Yeah.
And maybe that's, maybe I'll talk to Mike about that, that we need to drive that.
So we had a budget of forty thousand. Um they were just under three hundred of that. Um annually, we'll pay about fifty-nine hundred. Um and that's for them to be the host. And then in the fourth year, they actually do a free redesign, which is amazing. So, you know, we can redo anything. I wanna speak to Arts and Culture Board and see if we could get some kind of an artist contest, either video or some new pictures. That way they can have a fresh face.
Yeah, that looks great. It, where are they based out of? Where are the, where's Revised?
Revised, I wanna say it's Michigan, but I could be wrong.
Uh huh.
I could be wrong. I don't remember.
That's okay. It's it's all technology, so it doesn't have to that much, yeah.
Yeah. So the company we're using right now, we only paid about twelve thousand for that and fifteen hundred a year. So it's a big difference and putting in that extra amount, I'm hoping is gonna be a lot better. They have a lot more functions and things that we couldn't even imagine on our website right now.
Well, I'm excited for you guys and for all of us, huh?
Yeah. Yeah. So, do you, do you want to?
Thank you. Uh huh.
Do you need my help?
I think I might help myself.
Okay, I'll stick around for a second.
Just wanna stick around. Yeah. Jared, thank you for waiting and not, not believing.
Yeah.
Not a problem at all. It's actually good to hear what everybody else has got going on, so. Um I put together a little uh PowerPoint. We were finally able, hopefully, to get it going, so. Um good to talk a little bit about community branding. Let's see if this works. Hold over there. Oh, now it's going too fast. I'll stop it.
Is there a back button?
I don't know.
Okay, we're going to do it fast. We have to.
Who is this Jared Chatterley fella? So do you know I'm the director of the Office of Outdoor Recreation? I was a former director of the uh Department of Parks and Recreation for the city of Raton. Uh for seven years, I sat on the state of New Mexico's Northeastern Regional Tourism Marketing Board, which is a very fat, which is a long title.
And what did you guys, what what was your focus for Northeastern?
So we, it was a state-appointed board. Uh we were appointed by the governor and we would represent that, our portion of Northeastern Mexico um in developing tourism assets and providing information to Santa Fe, so that they were, they felt that they were marketing too much Santa Fe Albuquerque. They didn't have real good connection to the rest of New Mexico.
We all have feeling.
That was the purpose of establishing the regional boards, just so that there was, you know, we know our area better than anybody else does. So we would provide information for them about assets, about how we wanted to, you know, market our region. And then they would incorporate that in the websites and magazines and all the different advertising that went out. Actually, for a while, I was the vice president of that board. Um helped with the development as I got on the board, uh New Mexico was just beginning their own branding process, the New Mexico True Brand. And so their venture, steeped in culture, um helped spearhead this village of Simroons, where the west is still wild brand. And that's been their brand for, oh shoot, yeah, like fifteen years now, not more. And then it was on the marketing board as Las Vegas, New Mexico developed their new adventures down Old Rose brand, which I thought was very clever. And they went through the whole, whole branding process to do that. You know, it was adopted by the city commission, bringing their their brand. And then recently, Raton went through a partnership with the Raton Main Street. Um the state Main Street uh paid, really got a grant to do the branding process. And they came up with Raton Year Pass to incorporate historic Raton pass. That lends itself to, you know, your past to adventure, your past of this, your past of that. And that was a brand that was adopted five or six years ago now, was the Raton Year Pass brand.
So, was it your head of state of New Mexico's Northeastern Regional Tourism that allowed you to be on these marketing boards, or were you living in those communities?
So I lived in Simroon at the time when uh they did, my wife was the director of the Chamber of Commerce there. And we worked on that one just as a community without any outside input. Um because I was on the board, I was just aware of Las Vegas's branding effort. And they did the same thing. They hired a branding uh agency to be theirs, um with some input from the different area to help with that. And then the, the Raton Year Pass one was, I said it was a deal done by uh by um Main Street. They got a grant, Raton got a grant through Raton Main Street, and they paid um for the branding, branding process. It was late moon. It was the contractors or the, yeah, contractor who got that award and they did through the whole branding process with the all the assets and the 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 style guides and all that kind of stuff.
On that idea there, Jared, um it, like us bringing all these sports together and adding all the things that they have to offer and what we want to advertise would be the great start of getting a brand and brand, brand, branding agency to put all that together. And then we go from there as to advertising what we have to offer.
I think, well, I think for what I'm gonna present here, I hope you would consider what I'll have to offer as far as what I think could be a good brand identity for Trinidad.
Okay.
Um but yeah, we can, you know, go through that whole process again. Um we did just, oh, I'll talk about that here a little bit. So the purpose of a brand is create an identity. It's not just a logo, it's not just a slogan. It becomes an essence of what the community is. Um it should be compromise of where you came from, where we're at, and where we wanna go. Um that truly gives you an essence of what the community is. Uh they get the, the identity or the brand identity engages on an emotional level. So you want people to feel your brand. You want people, so that's why New Mexico True, uh you know, Adventure Steeped in Culture gives that feeling, that identity, something you can grab onto. Uh and you you identify with the brand on an emotional level. Uh should not make a promise that cannot be kept. I remember hearing that several times. If you're gonna market yourself as the cleanest bathrooms in the state, well, by then, you better have the cleanest bathrooms in the state.
We do.
Yeah, that is what uh, that's what you're selling. So you don't wanna, you know, become a brand and not be able to sell what it is that you're trying to, trying to promote. Then this becomes a lie. People will make fun of you for what it is you're trying to do. Uh inspires a feeling, goes back to that emotional level. So, you know, we've got colorful Colorado, um pure Michigan. So it's like you can get that feeling. What is Michigan? Pure, this is pure Michigan. Uh Utah's is life elevated. Um I like Lehigh, Utah's is pioneers past and present. So it kinda gives a feeling of of, you know, where a pioneer is, where their history came from, and where they wanna go. But Ghosts of Springs is refreshingly authentic. Um so it gives a feeling, you're fresh, of real, of legit. You know, in New Mexico, it's New Mexico True. It's truly New Mexico. Whatever that is in your mind is what that is. And so you can identify with those things. So Trinidad's brand history. And actually, I learned a little bit more about this after I made the, well, and I did not make this PowerPoint. This was my kid's project. Uh I'm just pushing the button to go through with it, but.
Your, your kid's project?
Yeah.
So he did it for you, or he did it as something for, or something at school, or?
Um well, he had taken a PowerPoint class, one of the classes in school. And so I said, all right, now you're gonna check what you learned it, I'm gonna make sure.
And that's great.
So all that, I mean, all the information is me with all the graphics and everything, the layout, as was my son.
Awesome. Well, thank you first.
Oh, absolutely. So, and I actually learned from Wally that there was a logo, a slogan before this one, and I can't remember what it was, but uh the original official logo was the silhouette of Kit Carson pointing, so that one in that corner. Um it's referred to locally as the Frog Hands logo. Because it looks like a frog has, it's like frog hands. Um several years ago, the city contracted with Studio Six Branding uh to develop a logo and style guide that we have today. Um so this, the one there, the one there is now obsolete. We have the new one. Um unfortunately, don't have it on there, but I think we're all familiar with the the new logo. Um the slogan that was created by Studio Six was uh way out west and uh it was never really officially adopted by the city. And it had, um it wasn't, in my opinion, and then some other people's opinion, it didn't really personify Trinidad. We're not a western town, we're not, you know, Dodge City, we're not Deadwood, anyplace like that. Um it made the town sound distant, remote, isolated, way out west. Kind of, you know, you think tumbleweeds and abandoned buildings and something like that. And it was before the development of Fisher's Peak State Park. And I think we all can agree that with Fisher's Peak State Park coming online, it has transformed the identity of Trinidad and transformed the identity of the region. Um and so I think that will, should incorporate or be incorporated in what we want to do as we uh determine what our brand identity should be. So Trinidad True Outdoors, um that is the uh current brand, I guess, for the Office of Outdoor Recreation. Um these should look similar or familiar to me. These are the the brand markers or the the mark, uh billboards that were developed for you all, um by Egg Designs. Um and it has the the logo on it. Um so. The True Outdoors incorporates our history, um Santa Fe Trail, coal mining, the ranching, the hunting, and resource extraction. So it goes to who we were as a community. Um that's, you know, that's what Trinidad was. And so we should incorporate as part of what our brand is, uh who we are as a community, uh with these things. Obviously, the Santa Fe Trail came through town, huge coal mining, uh influence, the ranching, and you know, hunting's been going on for a long time. I don't know if we come like that anymore with string of turkeys on, but hey, those were the good old days.
Those are past events now.
Who we are now, um Fisher's Peak State Park, Trinidad Lake State Park. Uh we have some outdoor events. We have the Rad Fest, the Perfect Word For Pony Express, which is this weekend. Some mar, some marquee outdoor recreation events. Um we have gravel grinding as a destination, uh outdoor festivals. So that is who, you know, in my opinion, Trinidad is becoming, we're becoming an outdoor recreation destination. And our brand should reflect that. Um who we wanna be. So we go back to no lying promises, promises we can't deliver. So if we do have all these recreation assets, then we should, you know, we should promote those. That's who we are. Um we wanna become an outdoor recreation destination. I think Fisher's Peak has put us on the map to do that. And with the development, you know, we still have the lake, the potential development of the river as a recreation attraction. I call it the trifecta, Trinidad trifecta. We have, with the minus, with the exception of a ski resort in town. We do have a ski resort not far out of town, there, Pichara Mountain Park. Um that we are, we we can accommodate just everybody's outdoor recreation need here in Trinidad, making us truly an outdoor recreation destination. Um we don't wanna be, a lot of people go, we should be like Moab, or we should be like Fruta. Uh we don't wanna be those towns. Let those towns be those towns. We wanna be our own town. We want other towns to be like, we wanna be like Trinidad. And so although there's good ideas and good things we can take from those um communities, we want to be with our own unique identity and make us stand out so that other people look at us for direction.
Do you think there's lessons to be learned from all of Moab and Fruta though?
Oh, absolutely. There's not, we don't want to, we just don't wanna mimic them. We don't wanna be a copycat, but we definitely want to take what they have to.
Well, there's lots, lots of lots of flaws. I've spent a lot of time there in my life and I have a lot of friends who are very popular town and
Yeah.
it's not a perfect place, so you don't want to wrong them. But there's a lot of lessons to learn.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I.
And it's similar history and similar, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of things that are parallel to Trinidad.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Jared, one of the things that uh with all of these things that we do have for the outdoors, do you see any companies like for bowling and just like a true, a true store with all of that outdoor stuff wanting to come here?
So, I had a meeting yesterday with a gentleman that wants to, wait, not wants, he's gonna start the Trinidad God Club. Looking at the Candy Company building right next to the Waterworks building. Uh if you look up Chesapeake Boat Works, Chesapeake Bay, I think it's Chesapeake Boat Works. When they do kit.
When they do kit. Kayaks kit, sailboats and kit recreation, like campers. And he also does programming where he takes people, he says Trinidad Lake is perfect to teach people to sails and have this whole aspect of. Building boats, selling boats, um, teaching people how to sail.
This win to use.
Unless he says, he's got, he's got, he's got a great win, which is what he said, a great win, but in my opinion, we've had too much of it right now. He says that it makes for, uh, he's already had conversations with CPW and working with permitting to be a concessionaire and do that kind of stuff and. He's in the process of looking at the building there as the storefront for his thing, so people are coming.
Is that the old Lucky's walking?
No. Right next to it, the old pantry.
Basically is the smell on it there.
Oh, well, either I still have leftovers from COVID or didn't see as bad as I thought it was going to be, but there's plenty of dead, there's plenty of buffalo hides and cow hides in the basement.
That's, that building belonged to my uncle at one time and it's, it's pretty cool, it's a brewery building, yeah.
Oh, it's a brewery.
I think the brewery building ought to be like an outdoor recreation center, like a mall but all like a little kayak shop, bike shop.
Or, or a REI.
Yeah, like, like the REI, but, but I don't think you could bring an REI here, it's just, we're not big enough, but you could bring.
No.
Individual vendors for each of those sections and that building would be unbroken.
Just like, just like the food market. That would be the, the place, that's where we wanna go, if we were able to have something, say something like that, I think we would truly come into our own.
Yeah.
That's gorgeous.
So incorporating the brand, we had a lot of different groups in here talking about, you know, what they're doing. The True Outdoors would be the overarching, uh, brand identity and then you can incorporate, you know, explore and discover history and heritage. In the True Outdoors, explore arts and culture in the True Outdoors, where everything is under that umbrella, you know, explore for like the Main Street or for the Chamber. Explore opportunity in the True Outdoors. Explore ports, uh, sports and recreation, um, all the, you know, welcome to Trinidad, the True Outdoors, and so our. Our marketing would have, so arts and culture may be something where. Maybe in every marketing piece, there's somebody with a backpack and a walking stick. That gives us feeling of, you know, the looking at art in the True Outdoors or. Opportunity is, you know, somebody sitting with a bag or on a bike at a cafe, you know, just so you incorporate the, the outdoor feel of everything. And everything that we're marketing.
Bring it, bring it downtown.
Yeah, exactly, so just like Rattone has, you know, your path to opportunity. Mine was when I was a park director, my little tagline was Rattone, your path to the good life. All those different things to kind of, you know, continue to push out the brand from whatever aspect you're coming from, whether it be arts and culture, history and heritage. Sports and recreation, but all of that continues overarching theme of True Outdoors.
One of the things is, I don't, I don't wanna give up on all of these boards meeting with us Jared, I.
No, not at all.
I still wanna continue with that because I think that we can really get some good branding from that.
Absolutely.
To, to get someone to. To do that for us and I, and I.
First thing in mind that I don't wanna give up, maybe split some half from the mirror that with these other boards you can.
And that's why I mentioned earlier that I'll talk to Mike, uh, to push from his end, to require these people to attend.
And I, I think it's beneficial for all of us, we're all, we're all working for the same thing.
Yeah.
Jared, did you say that you had True New Mexico?
So in New Mexico, the state adopted it, New Mexico True as their identity, so that was the, the thing. Ours would, you know, would be the True Outdoors thing that if you come to Trinidad, you're gonna experience something that's authentic, you're not gonna get the canned. Uh, guest ranch or the canned Disney World experience, you're gonna get something that's, that's true, that's unique, that's authentic, that you can share with your friends and say, hey, I did this. Only in Trinidad, Colorado, because it's true.
So not the Apple.
And, and, and I like that True Outdoors, cause that True Outdoors can go with true historical buildings.
Absolutely.
You know, the. You know, everything that we have to sell. You know.
It does, that's, that's the beauty of it, it overarches whatever aspect of the community we want to. To develop, whether it be the downtown, the history, the culture, if it wants to be, you know, arts, or if it wants to be, uh, economic development. Things like that are all under this auspice, True Outdoors.
I appreciate you putting all that together.
Well, you bet, so my final thoughts would be, you know, of course I'm pushing the True Outdoors brands, I got to adopt that, but to. To use Studio Six, they're familiar with it, they came up with the brand identity, if we wanted to use them to develop some marketing assets. Um, they're already familiar with us and to design the website, we just had a conversation about around the True Outdoors. And so I had a conversation with, with Marty and actually with Cheryl downstairs about. Once we came up with whatever the identity is and then the, the website was finalized. To put an insert in all the billing, which believe it or not, there's four thousand seven hundred bills that go out in this community. That would let everybody in the community know.
This is our brand.
This is our brand, this is where you go to find the information, promote the website, the tourism website, the, the city website. And so as a community, we're all in the know, we're all wrapped around it and we're pushing.
And we're all selling our own city.
Exactly right.
You know, something I'm glad if I just brought it up to Jared, just right before the meeting started and I was asking him if that it would be a good idea for. The city, unfortunately, that we protect this brand if we want to. Because we don't want all these other people to start using our brand and that's, that's not.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, you're trying to protect it somehow.
Yeah, if, if we would want to maintain this, just as we wanted to maintain any of the branding asset where people are consistent with the book, people are consistent with the. The terminology, so we are moving to True Outdoors.
Cause if you look at, there's. Other Trinidad's, New Mexico, there's Trinidad Texas, there's Trinidad California, they come up and they say.
And the island.
Yeah.
Yeah, first, cause.
And that gets, that gets everything.
So I think we just, I think protecting that, that brand.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Thanks.
You're very welcome, yeah. Absolutely. Um, I came here to talk about that little thing, cause uh, so I had. Said maybe sometime to talk about creating an outdoor destination, but we've been here for a while already, so if you guys wanna. Visit another time about that and then we can talk about that another time.
If we can get everybody together again, you can come back and do this and add that to it.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Okay, here to help you guys, absolutely.
And so I noticed on your thing it says TrinidadTrueOutdoors.com, is there a website for that already?
Yep, so TrinidadTrueOutdoors.com is the unofficial website of the Office of Outdoor Recreation. It's, it's currently owned by myself, it helps kind of circumvent some, uh. Some logistical issues, just to the number of links on there, but it is meant to be the clearinghouse for. Regional outdoor recreation, so it has, I market everything, it's been about an hour and a half drive. Most people wouldn't drive about an hour and a half to go do something fun and return to the community that they left from, so. You know, they say every good adventure starts at a coffee shop and ends at a brewery, and that's what I want, I want to start a coffee shop here. They travel no more than an hour and a half, have a great time, and then they come back here to reminisce and drink and party and have a good time. TrinidadTrueOutdoors.com is the website, thank you Jared.
Thank you.
You are very welcome.
Good talk, Jared.
Thank you.
And I guess that's it.
Well, I, I failed to add. Other items of discussion on the agenda, so you can add that if you wish, I know Chris did wanna talk a little bit about his radio proposal.
Well, that's fine. Sure.
Sure.
Uh, just real quick, because I'd basically been handed. Coordinating and taking care of our radio because of, uh, my past. And I just put down three, three basic areas that, uh, that I want to approach, uh, local radio, we're already running on. KCRT and their family of stations and. I, I, I won't go into details, but just from experience, I'm gonna take the schedule that we have. And, and move it into a, what, what I consider a more. Uh, more effective schedule, uh, that creates repetition, which is one of the.
It's been a while since I've seen that schedule, but I have seen it.
It's, it's scattered, it's just, right now it's just, and you know, we've got good rates, but it's just, it's here and there. You can, you can take it and you can actually force either a computer or, when I originally started this, it was an individual playing things on the log. And you can force it so that you get more of the prime time.
Okay.
Uh, and you, you know, you put it on days that are specific instead of, you know, just, you know, running out there, right now it's just running, you know, random. I do wanna increase it, the, the budget right now, we're, we've got four thousand a year. I wanna increase just, uh. June, July, August and September, an additional two hundred. Pushing, you know, obviously the, the copy and I will, I will work with Marty, I'm getting some really cool creative copy. Um, and we can include whatever branding we come up with, uh, you know, in any of that radio copy, but with the local station. Remind people that, you know, we're here, we have, you know, we invite tourists and we like them, be, you know, help them find the things, you know, and, and to stay here. But you also will have people that will seek out, you know, a, a local radio station. If they don't already have Sears XM or something like that, so you still wanna push. You know, the, uh, some information out to tourists, so that's basically local. Uh, New Mexico, we've got those hundred spots, the city traded, uh, you know, with the.
Right.
Those stations down there and they, uh, they have several stations, it would be good, I wanna utilize those spots. Again, June through August and again to promote, they got. Mountains, they got skiing, they got lakes, fishing, all this stuff, so focus on.
What we have to.
Music events, the, the things that, you know, would be a little specific, something, and, you know, if we can just, you know, bring a few people up. You know, for the caveman, for Trinidadio, for, you know. You know, just a few little things and really concentrate on that with those stations. And then, uh. Taking the, uh, the sponsorship that we did with Caveman. And I have had, just because I needed to get some idea of what would happen, I've had some, uh, communication with Cumulus in Amarillo. They are the, uh, uh, part of their family is their Americana station, which is a, you know, pretty popular station. One of the newer genres in radio. Basically, they didn't have a place to put all the American music, so they just all got thrown in the same thing. And it's, everything blues to country to, you know, Texas rock, you know, it's, it's. It, it's all together, but it's getting, it's getting some pretty good popularity, cause people like that, that variety. Um, that's why they're doing the festival, um, based with, uh, you know, their entertainment is Americana.
Right.
With the, uh, the, the add-ons that we have in there, the tickets, the, you know, the passes, the food, the different things that they've given us.
The ones we bought.
Right, with the sponsorship.
With the sponsorship.
Take that and, uh, give those to the radio station. Develop with them and they're working on it, now develop with them a, uh, summer long. Promotion, campaign, which will, you know, be between five and ten, I put five because I didn't wanna get too crazy out there, but they will get on this. Uh, partially because it's a great deal, partially because I know them. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's perfect, you know, for them to send, you know, to do this promotion, send people, and we're gonna send you to Trinidad, Colorado, you know. Push that role, even though it, it is outside of Trinidad, they're gonna have to come through here, so we can push that. And then at the same time, push Trinidadio during the summer and the days coming up, uh, you know, we can push the other attractions, again, the branding if we. Come into something while this is going on and, uh, I would. Also request to spend a thousand dollars with those stations, uh, on our own that we do. Literally promoting Trinidad, you know, as, you know, come on up to see us, you know, come this weekend, come next weekend, whatever, we put together again, working with Marty on some. Creative on that, uh, and that will. That would solidify, we would wind up for that thousand dollars getting, you know, ten, twelve thousand dollars worth of promotion through the summer. And a very strong market, Cumulus is the strongest. Family of, of radio stations in Amarillo and you're talking about, you know, reaching, you know, in the panhandle, you know, three hundred to five hundred thousand people. I can kinda say they're all potential visitors to Trinidad, which they really are, I mean, you never know.
From some of these, uh, little shops in town, we are getting them, day deserves to remember it all. You know, just, or even weekend.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I talk to them all the time at Farmer's Market when I do it. Uh, and.
How many hours is it? How many hours does it take them?
To jam or what do you say?
About three hours.
It's, it's three and a half hours, yeah.
Oh, so it's a little further than Denver.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and one of the, you know, and one of the things I'd push and I wanted, and I would probably use it some until we, if we establish a, you know, branding thing. And I put it on the board, uh, out by Walmart. Uh, Trinidad, you know, first off, on your Colorado adventure, because it really is the first thing you come through, you've gotta come through Trinidad to go. To the bathroom in Colorado, you know.
For a while they had this little saying that, um, we save the best for last and then south to the. Going south out of state and then, and then, I can't remember what they said about the first, but you know, the first in Colorado, so.
Yeah. Well, it is, it is the first best off, I, I, I just did that, I really. That was the best of several things that I looked at, but I didn't, I wasn't. Wasn't thrilled with it.
I think it's cute, it just, the only thing that worries me is that then people look like, yeah, you're right, I stop, I get gas, I go to Wendy's and I leave. They're like, encourage anybody to stop and stay.
To be honest with you, if they stop at Wendy's and get gas, then it's our job, once they're here, to get them to stay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're not gonna, you're not gonna convince somebody that, hey, you know, driving through Trinidad, like, I mean, going to Colorado, driving through Trinidad, cause they have this and this and this. You know, it's like, yeah, you know, so you gotta get two or three words, true, actually true is, is good.
Right, I don't like it, it's very generic to me and it doesn't capture the character of town, I think it's a good example of like. If we hadn't had this conversation with all of these different stakeholders in town and come up with something that was just. Based on our version of tourism that you would come up with, but I do think taking into account, you know, the historic preservation. Outdoor recreation, of course, is an important part of that, but it's not the only part of this, and there's this quirky element in Trinidad. That I think hasn't ever really been identified, but there's this fun, like. Like Austin has Keep Austin Weird, Portland I think has the same motto or whatever, there's something here that's also kinda quirky. That gives a uniqueness to this town, the problem with that True Outdoors is it's super generic Colorado mountain town. And the last thing we wanna do is become another gentrified mount, Colorado mountain town that has no hit, no connection to its history. And what is so like special about this town is that connection to its history and that you have people who've lived here for generations. Because everywhere else in Colorado, those families have been pushed out. And I think that needs to be embraced somehow.
Well, one of the things, but, one of the things about, about that is. Jared's choosing to go down that, you know, and, and, yes, you know, and, and, and he's been in this, he's been in that, so he, he knows what he's going after.
That's his charge.
My thing is, is. With all of us being together and giving this to a branding company. What can they come up with Trinidad, and what I like about that is. They may send, put all, put all this together as to what we have and then come up with something for us. You know, it's, and it may be going right back to where Jared has to offer.
Maybe.
You know what I mean, so.
Well, it bothers me that they're using it in New Mexico, it's like you copied them, even the way he presented it was almost like, cause if I had not known.
I know about that, yeah.
I was more in favor of the truth.
Yeah.
But once.
And why is he on the website and not the city, like, is there a conflict of interest there, like, is he creating his own branding company? Does he own the trademark for that, like, that, I do have some questions about that, like, is there, there's, are there legal questions with. An individual owning the website versus the city? I don't know.
It's a question.
I mean, I think, it, it's something that I think, I mean, that's.
Well, I don't think anything malicious, but it may be wrong.
No, 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 yeah, yeah, that's what I'm just.
But the thing of it is, is us, us getting to a brand is, I, I wanna continue, and if you could help us with, in that sense of getting these people together. As to, for us all getting to a point of how we can sell Trinidad.
Who loves trains?
How we can get people off of I twenty-five to stop here, you know, more people, we already know we're getting them. We just, we just know that the, the, the biggest influx of when they do stop in Trinidad, it would be Thanksgiving break. Or Christmas break or spring break, we do know that. We do know that we get just totally slammed with with people from.
You know, one of the things that I've always sent for years now and. Is to, and I brought it up, I think, to this board, but I've also brought it up at Chamber of Commerce, is that what they should do is get. The gas station people, their employees, get them and keep them informed as to some of the things that are going on.
Right.
Train them how to. Market Trinidad as well, because some of these people that come in, they stop, get gas or something and get a snack or whatever, what's what's there to do here?
Well, it's just like Marty's.
I think that's really part of, you get a few of them to market, that'd be great.
Like Marty's trying to put together with the Chamber and and us and the college, a program that you can go through to if you have.
By leadership?
Right, and like if you have, uh, if like J R's, they have probably fifty, sixty employees or more. If he can take those managers to go through that program and and then go back and sell it to their, to their workers and and. That's the kind of thing that I think we need to create, you know, uh, the business owners, if we could get maybe not the owner itself, but an employee. You know, and and that's how, that's how it's gonna become Trinidad selling Trinidad.
Well, you know, I I. This is something that, you know, I talked right around exactly what I was mentioning to you that this maybe over a year ago, and he said that he is willing to do it.
Yeah, you know.
And we actually did, we did a frontline leadership video training type program, uh, utilizing um. S C R T, so we had actors, we put a film together, we we gave it to the businesses, what they're.
I I still have it.
Right, what.
They didn't, they didn't distribute, I'm sorry to interject, but they didn't distribute it.
Oh, they didn't distribute it?
No.
Well, we put a lot of work into that.
And we can't, and we can't quit, you know, it's just like I was saying, nobody showed up today, so we're gonna quit, we can't kill on any of this stuff.
But we have five people show up, so.
Go and add.
Well, we had to go get.
That's okay, at least we got some.
You guys are really passionate and great talkers, you know, years ago, and I couldn't tell you how long ago, maybe ten years, maybe twelve years ago. We we got some T-shirts and we had the local shop making T-shirts for Trinidad and we were gonna go ahead and fund, I remember asking Bella Luna's. If we had T-shirts for them on the back of the shirts at the trolley hours in the Welcome Center, if they would wear them. And we 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 had a problem in distribution and people in downtown businesses doing that with their employees. But what you're saying is something similar to that and what would be really great, we thought to have people ride the trolleys, if everybody in town. That was waiting on them had trolley times and let this trolley thing that the the Welcome Center would have more volume. So if we did something like that again, it's really getting the word out to businesses in a passionate way, so they so they follow that lead, so one thing.
Well, I think the college is looking for more ways to get involved with the city.
I I talked to them about possibly hospitality program to teach, you know, some hotel management, but with without a food program, she didn't feel like they should do that, but I kinda feel like you can still do them without food, but.
And actually, we did do a hospitality program, I I was one of the. The what we got, what we did was we went on head to all the businesses, and now we're talking about eighteen years ago, we went to all the businesses and said, hey, listen, if if if. You know. John Smith takes a lesson, uh, take and passes the course of depending on what it was, would you guarantee that you would pay him? Twenty-five cents, fifty cents, seventy-five cents, a dollar, an hour or more for the same job in Trinidad? And uh, and and their program did take a place for, just that fall year, we had problems with the people wanting to take those courses in town. Because they could get jobs at the service places anyway, so.
Here's an idea, it's not much if it's far pitched or not, you know, it's talking about how do we keep these employees in some of these places informed. I don't know if this is doable or not, but what if tourism were to invest in, let's say, ten or twelve small TVs? And events that are going on in the community, like the Welcome Center, it could be one, you might as have TV, or you would put that information. Could it be linked to where we could pull one at your place, could you pull one at some of the J R stores where the most prominent places where the stopping place are? And link them all together, so when there's events going on, that this is a rolling thing going on, this way the employees don't really have to get.
Yeah.
And one day we'll be able to say, this is what's happening to you.
Yeah, I I told, I told me, I told, when I've seen that in that restaurant, I, it's.
Yeah.
It's the, it's the biggest way to sell your community, it's it's continuing, it's just continually rolled.
The information kiosk.
Right, it's just continually rolled.
There's side walk kiosk, you can place them outside and you can move them around, they don't have to be permanent either.
Any, yeah.
That's why being able to leak all this information all at the same time, I think would be cool.
Right. Right. Okay.
Uh, just, you know, working with the uh, Center of Texas Tourism in Austin and and over the years doing that, I was prepping to. Uh, I had the opportunity to hear a lot of success stories, how many of y'all been to San Antonio? Twenty-five or thirty years ago, San Antonio had the Alamo, had a few things, they were almost kind of like us. That none of them worked together and it was, there wasn't this effort and everything else and they were trying to build tourism. That, you know, they had just started doing some work on the on the river. They uh, their tourism department, which was through the Chamber then, uh, they came up with this idea, it was a year-long campaign. Just locally, educating their uh, their cab drivers, you know, waitresses, waiters. Bus boys, I mean, everything, anybody that ever talked to the public, and they had a really healthy contest, I don't know the details of the contest or what you had to do to to win. But they credit that 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 it was a year-long education thing and and then everybody was excited because it was helping their community, plus. I'm gonna win that thousand dollar prize or, you know, one of those thousand dollars, you know, because they gave some pretty good money away and they, this was, you know, at. You know, for years, that has been the big, you know, story of their success to.
Right.
They created it, edit it, stuff.
And that's, and I and I feel.
People, the caddies, everybody.
And I feel that's that's our responsibility to to sell Trinidad to to. Get everybody educated as to selling Trinidad, you know.
I think, you know, what I do with my staff is I ask them to choose like two or three things, like find one restaurant other than ours in town, like a good coffee shop. And a good trolley go high ground, and when people ask what should I do, give them that, and so it's very simple, right, it's just a couple of things. Like if the person who works for you likes to go fishing, have them tell them their third favorite fishing hole, not their favorite one, right? And um, you know, or, oh, the lake is right here, or you can get a fishing license here, you know, just like two or three things that are authentic to that individual. And then as a business owner, it makes it easy for me to train my staff, because they often know those areas better than I do, because I don't, you know, they're out exploring all the time, that's why people move there. And so, you know, if there was a way, one thing that, and I don't know if this was just because of Frisco, but when, or because of COVID, but Frisco has a meeting that's run by. One of the town, the town manager used to be the one who led it, and then she left and I don't know what's going on with it now, but all of the business owners are invited, not everybody goes, during COVID, everybody was there and then, you know, nobody. But it was an online virtual meeting, you show up for an hour, and it was really just to give a touch point to what was happening with the city, like what events are going on, here's what it is. But also to say, hey, there's a class going on, or here's this going on or whatever, or hey, remember, there's this festival going on, please teach your, you know, we'd really like you all to. Teach your staff to say these three things, and since you're at the Welcome Center, you should, you could even get like a script for people who don't know. Of just really simple three things and and what hap- what was nice about it, these meetings is that. It's an interaction with the business community, so all of the restaurant, hotel, Airbnb owners can come and they can hear what's happening. And it it creates dialogue and if they have questions, they can ask and then if that can go to counselor or not, and I think it really helps bring your business community together.
Even if we did buy, of course, some of these kiosk boards, we can actually do a training session on them for business owners through that. You know, uh, take, come in early, ten fifteen minutes and and see what Trinidad has to offer and this is what we would like you to sell.
I think we got a lot of great ideas, it's focusing and getting down to it, one of the hardest things gonna be is to get everybody to. You know, buy into the same a unity package, because I mean, the, what I've noticed in five years here, you know, with the theater, with. You know, all the different places, everybody has their own agenda, their own idea how to make it work, and even within, you know, the. Tourism, basically, in the city, you know, you got Jared working, you know, on his thing, we're working on another thing. Uh, I know there's communication we helped, but it's still, it it gives you that, it gives you that.
But I wanna, I wanna incorporate all of us, you know, we can, we can.
Separate, you know, that's what we need.
But you don't have that hundred percent consensus, you could have a, you know, as long as the will of the majority is there.
Yeah, you find something that could be a difference.
One of the things I see now is like, if you go down commercial, there's so much going on down commercial now, it just seems like it's, it's just reidentified itself. As opposed to West Main and and East Main, I don't know if any of you have noticed that, but there's just so much walking traffic on commercial now and.
Fewer vacant buildings, I think, in commercial than there are in the.
Yeah, you know, and I, and I just think that, you know, um, we're losing some on on West Main, but I I I just think we, I see more people off of the highway.
When you're walking past a giant block of a building that's dilapidated and hasn't been fixed up without storefront, I mean, there there's problems with that, that some of these buildings are just sitting there. And I don't know what the progress is on like the opera and the keyhole building, the one on Animus and Main.
I had a discussion with the owner last Saturday on the Opera House, as I mentioned.
One of the things I think would be cool if Walmart were coming open a drugstore there again. And and put some of their money back into the cities and say, they're basically, they killed Main Street, Walmart killed Main Street.
Yeah.
But try to help a city revitalize it by putting a drugstore down there and opening that fountain and and bringing that building back to fruition and. That would be something for Wally to to to.
I really believe you're, you're exactly right, I think that all these big boxes like that, they come into a community and they.
Sure. Will kill us.
They should be part of revitalizing the community that had destroyed.
Right. And I feel a letter should be sent to Walmart, because let me tell you something, if you go around Colorado, they're doing little pop-up Walmarts all over, they don't have a lot of stuff in them.
They are.
But they do have their drugstore.
Hmm, yeah.
You know, so.
Because drugs and cosmetics, I think, I heard Whole Foods that like seventy-five percent of their revenues come from from cosmetics.
Yeah.
Which seems so bizarre to me, but.
Chris, on on this, the money would probably come out of advertising, but if you wanna put it on next agenda for rest of.
Well, actually, if it's only a thousand dollars, you can prove that now.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And the increase on.
And just FYI, our contract with K C R T.
And the increase on K C R T is six hundred dollars, right?
I'm sorry?
The increase is six hundred dollars on K C R T and then the thousand dollars for the additional.
Cumulus in there.
Okay.
And our contract with K C R T does renew in June, so we could look at that and revise that entire contract.
The uh, the the New Mexico ads, they they are wanting us to consider running something with them, and that's at least we can see what this does and.
Yeah.
I'll I'll give you my opinion, my uh, report.
That's elementary C.
Maybe, maybe.
It's elementary C, I mean, yeah, elementary C.
Yeah.
When when we we go, we negotiate with K C R T, if we with six hundred dollars, if they would give us more.
Oh, man, we have the bottom right now.
Yeah.
They, we we have a good rate with them. I I, you know, I.
They have worked with us before, uh, through COVID, they gave us a.
They.
A pretty good deal when we were.
Yeah, they they and they pop.
They're not gonna go any lower.
Point on that, you know.
Yeah, they'll pop, they'll, well, if they go any lower, it affects their their political rate, but if.
More advertising.
What they do, they they'll throw bonuses in.
Right.
When when they have something good happening, because it helps them too, so, yeah.
More advertising.
All right.
Adjourned.
Good conversation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Turned at uh, ten fifty-four?